Hi, my name's Maren Toohill. I volunteer as a board member with the CPTC. My distinct pleasure to introduce to you somebody you already know, Jenny Rate. I have known Jenny for a number of years. In my day job, I'm the town planner in town of Littleton. And Jenny has certainly helped Littleton grow in our understanding of what affordable housing means and how we need to embrace what it means so that everybody in our community, who we rely on in our community, can also live in our community. Jenny is now the executive director of the Regional Planning Agency, and I'll let Jenny take it from here. And on behalf of CPTC, thank you for your time this evening to attend this webinar.
All right, thank you, Maren. I'm very happy to be here. And thank you to Citizen Planner Training Collaborative for hosting these webinars. These are instructional and educational webinars that are designed for planning boards and zoning boards of appeal throughout the Commonwealth. And they are available on demand like tonight. They also, there will be another, I'm not certain which topical area yet, but there will be another one hosted by NIMCOG at some point during the fall. And other regional planning agencies as well host these webinars. And they usually include, you know, a speaker and, you know, on a topical area that relates to the type of work that you do on your volunteer boards. There's also a conference that takes place in March of every year, usually on the Saturday, the third Saturday of March. It's a full-day event where you can learn everything all consolidated into one. So there's lots of opportunities to learn. The website also has a pretty significant amount of material and information that could be of value to you as a board member serving your community. I want to just check to see from the ZBA, do you need to do anything else formally before I get going?
Hi, this is George. I just want to say that Van Peck is trying to log in. He's waiting for that verification email. So I'm going to fold in mine to see if he can get in.
Okay.
I just did that too.
Oh, you did? Okay, you're ahead of me. Good, brilliant.
And to answer your question, this is Sean Callahan, Vice Chair. I don't, we have some business that needs to be attended to, but that we have pushed that off till after this webinar. So I think we're, I think we're good to go until then. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Well, we will be on the lookout for Van and hope he arrives soon. In the meantime, I am going to share my screen. And I will be pausing during this presentation for any questions. I know we also have people who are not part of the zoning board of appeals who are participating. And I will do my best to get to any additional questions at the end of my webinar or at the end of the presentation part of this webinar. So without further ado, I'm going to get started.
Okay, and then we'll mention that the Q and A is open and anyone can put a question in there for Jenny.
Right, thank you. All right, hoping everybody can see this just fine. And so with that, again, thank you so much for having me here. Really looking forward to this presentation for you. I have done this previously for CPTC and other regional planning agencies and municipalities. I have a nearly 30-year career working in housing and community development and planning in the state of Massachusetts, working for local municipalities as well as for other regional planning agencies. I have a particular expertise area in affordable housing and fair housing. And so what I'm sharing with you tonight is a blend of the required course information and also I will be able to share some of my own experience with you. So tonight, we're really focused on two questions or topics, if you will. First one is what are fair housing laws and the history of fair housing? And the second is what exactly is your duty to affirmatively further fair housing as a municipality? The workshop is going to address these topics in the following manner. First, we're going to get an overview of fair housing laws. What are some of the, what's the federal law? What about Massachusetts law and cases? And then I'll review local regulations and initiatives. I will also review how municipalities and local boards can avoid housing discrimination. And so you'll have a little bit of everything in this evening's presentation. But first, I'm going to talk about fair housing itself, what is, what exactly it is. So with fair housing, it's the most important thing to remember is it's the right to choose housing free from unlawful discrimination. And it combined with the Federal Fair Housing Act of 1968 and various Massachusetts laws aims to protect people from discrimination in housing based on race, color, religion, sex, national origin, familial status, disability, marital status, age, sexual orientation, gender identity, and other factors. All these together are considered to be bases or classes together that form the content of the Fair Housing Act. Fair housing makes illegal any discrimination also in the sale, lease, or rental of housing or making housing otherwise unavailable because of race, color, religion, sex, handicap, familial status, or national origin. Fair housing laws are separated into three distinct categories. The first is court decisions based on state and federal constitutions. The second is statutory, and the third is regulatory. All fair housing laws have the same purpose, to prevent discrimination in the rental or sale of housing. So a lot of people wonder about the origin of how communities or why communities have to affirmatively further fair housing, which I'm going to talk about in greater detail a little bit later. The most important thing to remember is that municipalities throughout this Commonwealth and really the nation, the United States, the reason why we do what we do is all held together through zoning regulations. And it was through a Supreme Court act that put together the basis of why we zone and how we zone. And in the 20th century, the trends were that around the turn of the 20th century, there was really a new wave of housing and land use policies. And those were introduced across the nation to essentially disperse households from what were considered to be overcrowded cities and to encourage property ownership, so people buying housing and homes. And underlying many of these laws was a pretty concerted effort to segregate households by race and ethnicity. And that was actually codified into law. Some state and local policies excluded Black, Indigenous, people of color from living and owning property in certain communities. Others segregated neighborhoods by class by permitting only single-family homes to be built in the most desirable neighborhoods, which effectively priced out most households of color. Private acts of overt discrimination such as deed restrictions that prevented the resale of individual properties to anyone of a designated race further cemented residential segregation as the norm in housing markets. And exclusionary planning and zoning was largely aided by the federal government through federal funding. In fact, the infancy of redlining really came during the Great Depression, when new federal programs were developed to stimulate the economy through home building and home buying. The Federal Housing Administration, or the FHA, insured home mortgages, allowing banks to lend and households to purchase homes less valuable, less expensively than ever before. And to protect against value loss on insured properties, the FHA only covered loans on new housing in what were considered to be stable neighborhoods. And those neighborhoods were defined by color-coded maps developed by local real estate boards based on existing distributions of population and housing types. That is racially segregated by local policy and private actions that were already in effect. So local industry groups routinely raided neighborhoods with large concentrations of Black households and other distinct racial or ethnic subgroups as being the least stable and then outlined them in red, which gave rise to the term "redlining." That was used to describe the exclusion of most households of color from accessing low-cost mortgage credit and better quality or improved housing. The redlining that I'm talking about continued through the post-World War II era with FHA maps guiding not just mortgage insurance, but also the securitization of loans by Fannie Mae and low-interest rate borrowing by veterans under the GI Bill. At housing, where housing was located, who could access housing, and the zoning that underlies it all. Further, there were multiple other federal acts that occurred that all had an impact on place and the places that we live in, most of them. For example, the Housing Act of 1949. The Housing Act was a really key one in that it had urban renewal at the center of it. And that slums and blight, those were two key words that were written into the law and are still characterized as such today through various federal programs. Further, the Executive Order 11063, which was President Kennedy's order, banned segregation in federally funded housing, including the construction, operation, rehabilitation, financing, urban renewal, et cetera, that any discriminatory policies and practices would result, in fact, in segregated patterns of housing and that they necessarily produced forms of housing and forms of discrimination that essentially deprived many Americans of equal opportunity and the experience and exercise of their unalienable rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. The Civil Rights Act was also somewhat intertwined with that in that it prohibits discrimination due to race, color, religion, sex, or national origin. It also prohibits discrimination in employment, public accommodations, and it strengthens federal efforts to desegregate schools. Later on, you'll hear about how Massachusetts echoed the Civil Rights Act in its own Massachusetts state law. The Fair Housing Act or the Civil Rights Act of 1968 also went a little bit further based upon a study by the Kerner Commission between 1967 and 1968. Of course, the assassination of Martin Luther King Jr. in 1968. And the Civil Rights Act ultimately stated that the FHA is prohibiting discrimination in the sale, rental, and financing of housing based on race, religion, and national origin, sex, and as amended, disability and family status. So it continued to add different bases to ensure that there was further codification of those who would not be able to be discriminated against as a result of their access to housing. The Fair Housing Act of 1968 also codified and gave enforcement powers to not just HUD, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, but also the federal, the fair housing in an equal employment opportunity office and the Department of Justice, which still is in effect today. So that is a little bit about some of the background of the leading cases that form a lot of the framework of what I'm talking about this evening. So what about the more further federal, state, and local fair housing laws? So I'm going to go through a number of slides here. And first, I'll just give you a quick, quick overview of what I'm going to talk about. So first, I think it's important to ask a question. What kinds of discrimination do fair housing laws really ultimately prevent? And it's important to understand that there are some federal protections are very broad. On top of that, though, Massachusetts protects against even more categories of discrimination than the federal government. We take it a step further. Some local governments also have additional protections. And local governments usually work very closely with the Commonwealth to protect, prevent discrimination. What do fair housing laws require of you as public officials? Two, one, avoid discrimination in municipal housing programs. Two, avoid discrimination in the implementation of federal and state housing. Three, avoid discrimination in land use regulation practices, which is the most important to your board, and also to affirmatively further fair housing, also important to this board. So why were fair housing laws passed? After I just explained the various federal acts that took place, fair housing law began really with challenges to the constitutionality of that racial discrimination in housing and also some of that underlying zoning that I was talking about previously, including in the federal Supreme Court case of Buchanan versus Worley in 1917, which made ordinances that, Supreme Court made ordinances that enforced the denial of housing to minority groups in white-zoned areas unconstitutional and illegal, where of course it had previously been a regular practice and occurrence and had been codified in many local bylaws and ordinances. A step further beyond that, in 1948, the Supreme Court in the Shelley versus Kramer decision made that the enforcement of racially restrictive covenants unconstitutional and illegal. And these two things combined really helped to set the stage for a lot of other federal law, federal rules, and rulemaking both at the state level and beyond. So as I mentioned, in 1957, Massachusetts really went a step further and outlawed racial discrimination in housing. And other states have also followed suit with this, but Massachusetts really does lead in this regard in our state laws. Jones versus Mayer in 1968, prior to the Civil Rights Act and the Fair Housing Act being passed, the Supreme Court upheld that federal law bar on all racial discrimination, private or public, in the sale of rental or any kind of property. And then also in 1977, the proof of a racially discriminatory intent is now required in any claim that race was a motivating factor in a land zoning type of decision. And that became in effect with the Village of Arlington Heights versus Metropolitan Housing Development Corporation. So all of these are really setting the stage for what's to come in terms of how and why we need to affirmatively further fair housing. But I just want to note that the Chapter 426 of the Acts of 1957 that I'm mentioning in Massachusetts, this was the first instance since Reconstruction that the federal government undertook significant legislative action to protect civil rights. The Act established the Civil Rights Section of the Justice Department, and it created that Federal Civil Rights Commission with authority to investigate discriminatory conditions and also recommend corrective measures. And Massachusetts aimed to follow suit by forming a similar, basically an echo of that federal version of the Fair Housing Act. So a lot of people have heard about other, other actions that have happened in other states, which are, you know, notable and of influence. Mount Laurel is one that is often recognized if you've studied or been planning or you have been in the development community for some time. You might have heard of Mount Laurel, one and two. There's two versions of this. And these were that the New Jersey Supreme Court said municipal land use regulations that prevent affordable housing opportunities for the poor are unconstitutional. And under the Mount Laurel doctrine, New Jersey municipalities must not only plan and zone for, but also take affirmative actions to provide realistic opportunities to provide their quote-unquote "fair share" of a regional need for low and moderate income housing. Now, this aversion of Mount Laurel has happened in many states throughout the United States since this time. And Massachusetts actually has a version of this that I'm going to talk about as well. Also, the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs versus the Inclusive Communities Project also noted, you know, many, many decades later, that claims of racial discrimination in housing cases should not be limited by questions of intent. And the court in that case upheld the application of disparate impact under the Fair Housing Act. And the disparate impact is a really important key point around fair housing, which I'll also talk about more after I get through all these cases. The last one here is the Bank of America versus City of Miami. This case basically stated that cities can sue banks over the Fair Housing Act violations if they actually target minorities. So with Mount Laurel, just for a moment here, I want you to understand that Mount Laurel was really the, really the enacted, the ultimately the Fair Housing Act in the state of New Jersey, but it also created in 1985 what's called the Council on Affordable Housing and essentially worked to strike down local preference and basically aided in the ability of the state to affirmatively be able to build new housing under this doctrine. So there were many actions, a lot of times what happens is something is passed and then many actions follow in order to be able to implement these various acts and, you know, either through regulations or other types of guidance. So a little bit more about the Miami case. This one was a discrimination lending by banks that led to high-interest loans given to people with good credit. And the city of Miami filing suit to recover the taxes that it would have received if houses hadn't been in foreclosure or some sort of state of foreclosure. The U.S. Supreme Court said that the case could proceed under the Fair Housing Act if the city indeed showed and demonstrated how it was harmed by the bank's actions. And this is pretty, pretty phenomenal that, that the Supreme Court recognized this and that the city of Miami had the standing to bring suit under the FHA because it noted and it was careful to analyze and assess the economic injuries that occurred as a result of discriminatory practices by a private company. So when thinking about federal fair housing laws, just sort of generally, they are out direct prohibitions of housing discrimination under the Fourteenth Amendment. It prohibits discrimination in any program that receives federal funds. So for example, with the city of Lowell, there are many examples of the types of federal funding that the city receives. And this in particular relates to the HUD funding, but also goes to a lot of federal funds that the city receives, where the Fair Housing Act is actually embedded into those contracts. That is a call requiring action to remedy past discrimination in programs that receive certain federal funds as well as future thinking, that affirmatively furthering fair housing. The Fair Housing Act of 1968, as I mentioned, prevents discrimination based on a set of different bases that are outlined here under the Equal Protection Clause. And further, there were additions to this as a, as a result of various acts, including the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990, which prevents discrimination based on disability in programs and activities provided or made available by public entities, including places like the city of Lowell, and also prohibits discrimination based on disability for entities operating housing and community development programs. This could be both the city of Lowell, and it also could be the local housing authority. Further, the Violence Against Women Act. This has been extended in this congressional calendar year. And if extended, it will require the establishment of an emergency transfer plan for facilitating the relocation of certain people who are victims of domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assault, or stalking. Any federal funding recipient may not discriminate based on race, color, national origin, disability, age. And as you can see, the Community Development Act Fund recipients cannot discriminate based on these things as well as religion. And this includes community development block grant recipients. Education Fund recipients also cannot discriminate based upon gender. That includes dormitories and other housing affiliated with an educational institution. Just to go back to the CDBG program for a moment. This, the community, I don't know how familiar the zoning board of appeals is with this, so I'll, I'll give a little 101 here. The CDBG program provides communities with resources to address a wide range of unique community development needs. And it is largely, it is the longest continuously running program through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. It originated in 1974. And it has both federal recipients. Those are recipients who receive money directly through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. And then HUD also grants funds to states. So the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities provides funds to municipalities, not entitlement communities like the city of Lowell, but to other communities through a competitive process for them to be able to access community development block grant funds. But as an entitlement community, the CDBG program is active in all types of activities around housing, economic development, infrastructure, providing social service program funding, planning activities, and you name it. There's a lot of things that happen as a result of CDBG grants. With HUD funding recipients, they must correct historical discrimination. And that means any fund recipient must take what's called meaningful actions to overcome the legacy of segregation, unequal treatment, and historic lack of access to opportunity in housing. Further, that means that HUD and its, any of its grantees, as well as all executive agencies and departments of the federal government and any recipient of housing and urban development program or activity funds must comply with what is still the interim final rule to affirmatively further fair housing. Municipalities are responsible for reporting. They need to certify that they have affirmatively furthered fair housing in connection with local required plans. And there are many resources that are currently available for communities to do this. There is an update to that final rule, a new version of the rule under the Biden-Harris administration that is also under review and that will continue to strengthen and codify the requirement to affirmatively further fair housing. Okay, we're at a break here. I'm going to pause to see if there are any questions from members of the board. Not seeing any questions. So I'm going to continue. Tim, do you have a question? No. Great, okay. Then I will keep moving. So Massachusetts, I just reviewed federal fair housing laws, and I talked about program recipients who receive funding and must affirmatively further fair housing. As I mentioned, Massachusetts, under Article 106 of the Constitution, states that, quote, "Equally equality under the law shall not be denied or abridged because of sex, race, color, creed, national origin." And so these are things that are in addition to and amplify the Federal Fair Housing Act. Categories of Massachusetts fair housing laws include housing discrimination not being allowed, discrimination in public accommodations is not allowed, and discrimination based on disability through zoning is not allowed. It's also unlawful to discriminate based on race, religion, color, national origin, sex, gender identity, sexual orientation, age, genetic information, ancestry, marital status, veteran or active military status, disability, familial status, meaning having children, and source of income or receiving some sort of housing assistance. Article 106 was adopted in 1976 and annulled Article 1 of the Massachusetts Declaration of Rights and substituted the following, "That all people are born free and equal and have certain natural, essential, and unalienable rights, among which may be reckoned the right of enjoying and defending their lives and liberties, that of acquiring, possessing, and protecting property in fine, that of seeking and obtaining their safety and happiness. Equality under the law shall not be denied or abridged because of sex, race, color, creed, or national origin." And as you can see, if you look at this list, you might see a lot of different people be able to qualify under these various bases. That's because Massachusetts wants to make sure that there's no housing discrimination for anybody in the state, in this Commonwealth, so that we can all have access to housing regardless of where we currently live and where we want to live. The regulation of enforcement of fair housing laws, as I mentioned, it's sort of an echo of what happens at the federal level. In Massachusetts, we created a Massachusetts Commission Against Discrimination, or MCAD. That's the agency that's in charge of investigating discrimination cases. And then MCAD actually creates those regulations that are, that they work with. And they identify under those regulatory, under that regulatory process that it's unlawful to have any housing practices generally. It also prohibits discrimination in leasing or renting of accommodations to persons with children, requires reasonable accommodations in the rental or sale of housing to persons with a physical or mental disability, and prohibits discrimination in the furnishing of credit services and granting of mortgage loans. The Massachusetts Attorney General's Office's Civil Rights Division is the prosecutor of any type of issue that comes forward as a result of an MCAD investigation. Also in Massachusetts, we have something called Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40B. And this is the, this is a really important one because it's really also the Commonwealth's Regional Planning Law from 1964. And in 1969 is when the legislator, the legislature added these sections, 20 to 23, to address what they consider to be To address what they consider to be regional housing disparities. And the law assumes that communities must meet and have met their regional fair share of at least ten percent of their housing inventory. To be included in what's called the subsidized housing inventory or the SHI. Which is managed by and maintained by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. And this is, this means that the housing inventory has to be deed restricted and affordable to low-income people. And subsidized by some sort of program. It was upheld. Um, in the Board of Appeals of Hanover versus Housing Appeals Committee. Nineteen seventy-two to seventy-three. And it was also upheld following a failed statewide ballot initiative to repeal the law in twenty-ten. Further, there's also a lot of human rights commissions um, that do a lot of a variety of work. But some of them can actually investigate against housing discrimination. So many municipalities have created these uh, these different commissions. And they usually receive reports of housing discrimination and notify MCAD. Most of the commissions do not have that independent power to assess fines for discrimination. Municipalities themselves can also investigate these uh, different uh. Reports of the, or you know, reports of discrimination. Powers of those human rights commissions include that they may quote-unquote assure compliance with existing state law. Hold investigative hearings or ask a court for the authority to subpoena witnesses. Commissions usually report their findings to MCAD or to the Attorney General's Office. Boston and Cambridge, those two cities have uh, human rights commissions with those capabilities. So I'm going to talk a little bit about forty B more for a second before I get into. What it means to. Be responsible in avoiding discrimination or discriminatory practices. And I first want to note that. Implications of suburban and this type of zoning that I mentioned in the earlier part of my presentation. Are really have a, have had a pretty significant impact throughout the broader metropolitan area. And that's basically all of eastern Massachusetts, which is of course, that includes the city of Lowell and the surrounding areas around Lowell. And um, the implications are that there's uh, a lot of existing exclusionary zoning practices by municipalities that have been left unregulated. For years. And it meant that there was, it had a major impact on the supply of housing in our communities. In fact. We're behind in producing housing for decades now, and that underproduction has led to the. Um, you know, the challenges of actually getting housing permitted in our communities. Um, further, there's been an unwillingness over the years for courts or other entities to intervene. And so when forty B came to be. Um, it was an attempt of the courts and the Massachusetts. Um, at the time, our legislative leaders um, being willing to intervene. And ensure that their exclusionary zoning practices were no longer occurring. So that more housing could be produced to address our economic issues in the Commonwealth. Um, the challenge, of course, is actually, and still remains to be, the challenge of getting housing permitted. And oftentimes. Um, running public meetings and having public hearings can be a time when you of course need to be mindful. Of how you conduct that hearing and the types of comments that you receive. As well as the type of dialogue that you engage in as board members. And so it's um, it's important to remember that as a public employee, as a special municipal employee. There are things that you must abide by in order to understand that. You are being compliant with the Federal Fair Housing Act and Massachusetts Fair Housing Laws and anti-discrimination laws. Um, and also engaging in your duty as a member of the city of Lowell. To affirmatively further fair housing. And so some of the ways that these are. These are some ways, this is not everything. But first part is reminding those in a public meeting, when you're discussing housing policy or regulatory change. Perhaps permitting a project, that it is unlawful to discuss keeping out people with a variety of different things. So including people who are, who have a disability. Um. Children and talking about the impacts of schools. Um, income limitations, for example, people who may require some form of assistance or subsidy. As I noted earlier, these three groups of individuals are all protected under state and federal fair housing laws. And further, if the result of a policy is discrimination against a protected group of individuals, then actually a case could be brought against the city. Under the Federal Fair Housing Act as well as the Massachusetts anti-discrimination laws. The policies or a policy individually must be the reason for the cause of that disparate impact. So that's kind of the, back to that case that I was referencing earlier out of Texas versus the Inclusive Communities Project in twenty-fifteen. It is possible if that policy or a decision um, has resulted in discriminated discrimination against a protected group. Then that case can be moved forward. And further, um, in twenty-sixteen, a violation of Massachusetts law is also found where a policy results in discrimination against a protected group of individuals. Then that policy too must demonstrate that it causes disparate impact. And I'm just a little bit more about this one, Burbank Apartments Tennis Association versus Parkman. Um, this was really, you know, this particular one is about tenants and allegations of those tenants. Did not support claims of subsidy discrimination per se. However, there was a disparate impact claim that were definitely uh, a problem in relationship to Massachusetts anti-discrimination laws. Even though the owners never committed a specific breach of what they had as a contract in accepting um. Housing subsidies in order to have tenants living at this property. And they followed all applicable requirements in deciding not to renew a particular set of subsidies. Um, the claims failed because ultimately um, there was a practice or a policy that was in place. That ended up causing disparate impact to that population of people. Again, that population of people, that group. Was a protected group of individuals under Massachusetts state law. So how do you avoid this? Um. First step is getting training and access to training and, and consulting with people who can help you to navigate. What might become a tricky conversation or a tricky uh, decision-making process, or if you're thinking about looking at new policies. Um, where you're concerned or you're, you're wondering how you should approach it. Um, the first tip, as always, is avoiding discrimination, providing affordable housing information. And those are any, any affordable housing program that is overseen by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. Um, it could also be any affordable housing program that the city of Lowell runs. Or any information that you are communicating must be accessible to people with disabilities or with limited, limited English proficiency. Further. You need to caution the people who are participating in your meetings about affordable housing to avoid discrimination. And that means that under Chapter forty B, which I referenced earlier, that can allow the construction of higher density housing. And even though that may not occur regularly in the city of Lowell. It is a possibility and it is important to understand that those permit conditions, as well as the conversation cannot be discriminatory in any way. Housing authorities also need to exercise caution and any municipality um, that works in engagement. And engages with their housing authority and must understand that they can't discriminate against applicants or tenants. And they also need to have assembly and freedom of speech be, those rights be protected. And then lastly, zoning regulations can be unlawful if there is a discriminatory impact. And that means that zoning regulations that prevent families with children or low-income residents can be considered to be unlawful. Um, municipalities have attempted to limit, for example, the use of property for drug addiction or rehabilitation. Um, but recovering addicts actually have a protected disability. Further, that's uh, codified in Mass General Law Chapter forty A, which is the zoning act under Section Three. Um, and also now Section Three A specifically prohibits against uh, discrimination against families or stating any sort of preference for seniors. So how do you further avoid discrimination through land use controls? So I'm going to give you a story about New Orleans. Um, to give you a sense of, you know, again, zooming, zooming out again, but understanding that. Federal case law and case law in general still has an impact on how we conduct business at our local level. So it's not just. Um, Massachusetts law, but you also need to be cognizant of important cases. So for example. Um, the Greater New Orleans Fair Housing Action Center versus the State Bernard Parish in two thousand nine. Um, there was a determination that was made, and I'm going to tell you a little bit about the, the background and the story. So after Hurricane Katrina, there was a parish outside of New Orleans which passed a law limiting rentals to family members unless a permit was obtained. And they also passed a moratorium on multifamily housing. The federal court analyzed that moratorium and the law and found that there were various terms used to describe why people. Wanted to pass the laws and those were terms used by both the board, people in the general public. And it was determined that these justifications were like references to quote-unquote new people and undesirables were the types of language that were being used. And that had been previously found by courts to be camouflaged racial expressions. The court ultimately determined that based on the impact to the protected group. And the discussion about fears related to who might move into the community. That the moratorium and the law were both found to be unlawful and were invalidated. So um, again, you know, I think it's important for, to understand. Um, and particularly this, this came to light in the HUD discriminatory effect rule. That you, you cannot, you need to be mindful both of the dialogue and the decision-making. So some additional uh, relevant cases for reference. Uh, there's uh, various forty B conditions and preferences. I know that again, that's not something that this zoning board of appeals typically takes up, but. Um, should you ever be engaged in a forty B review or application? Um, it would be important to understand the types of conditions and preferences that you might someday put into that permit. Um, further, we all are, I think, familiar with the Southern Middle, Southern Middle Sex Opportunities Council because they. Um, have property here in Lowell that they helped to manage for. People experiencing homelessness or who are at risk. And um, SMOC versus the town of Framingham in twenty-twenty. They won that case due to permitting delays because of Dover uses um, that they were proposing um, in order to get built in the town at the time, the town of Framingham. It's now known as the city. Um, further, Avenue Six E Investments versus Yuma, California. Where the city tried to uh, do a rezoning for higher density. But was not cognizant of the broader impact of only zoning for higher density in one neighborhood. Um, that also is another, you know, meaningful case for you to reflect upon. Should you be um, entertaining similar types of zoning amendments in the city of Lowell. Okay, so taking, how do you take meaningful action to affirmatively further fair housing? It means that you are taking an action um, in addition to just combating discrimination or overcoming patterns of segregation. And fostering inclusive communities, making them free from barriers that restrict access to opportunity based on protective characteristics. You also are doing that by addressing housing needs, both locally and regionally beyond. And replacing those segregated living patterns with integrated and balanced living patterns and ensuring access to opportunity. So Massachusetts and federal laws are prohibiting against discrimination. Municipalities can establish local commissions to investigate and report discrimination. And municipalities that receive HUD funds are obligated to further the purposes of the Federal Fair Housing Act through affirmatively furthering fair housing. Municipalities must avoid discrimination when creating housing policy. Implementing housing programs or creating housing opportunities. Land use regulation cannot be intentionally discriminatory or have a discriminatory impact. And municipalities must take meaningful actions to affirmatively further fair housing. So for more information, I do have a workshop supplement that uh, we will distribute following this webinar. Um, and feel free to reference that for any additional information about the statutes and cases and anything else that's been cited. And so with that. I will see if there are any questions. I know there's a question in the chat, but yeah, Maran.
I, I did see a couple of questions in the chat. I don't see any hands raised or.
Dennis, would you like to speak?
Um, if I could, um, I just heard you say um, that sometimes land use regulations have a discriminatory impact. Um, that seems a little broad. Um, that what might, I have two questions here in the chat that kind of go to that. Uh, specifically how single-family lots, especially single-family larger lots. Might have a discriminatory impact on affordable housing. Um, but how, how, how do you determine land use regulations have a discriminatory impact? Is there some, some cases that we could use as models as to where that was used? Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Yeah, I was, uh, this is the uh, the abbreviated K, uh, class. So. If I moved fast and uh, you missed anything, I apologize, but um. And I did not make a direct connection just to a particular use or anything of that nature in my previous uh, presentation. Um, so existing zoning bylaws that restrict areas to single-family use. And how are those compatible with fair housing laws? Um, there's not a direct connection and or compatibility per se with fair housing laws. That would be more in the sale or rental of those properties. Or if there's a pattern on behalf of the, that the city is undertaking. Where you uh, perhaps consistently only approve and uh, single-family zoning. And don't approve other types of housing or other types of uses across the city. That might be considered. Uh, potentially having a discriminatory effect. But also, um, what I was talking about, about the just, the potential for disparate impact and the discriminatory effect rule. Is that um, these are, this would be a practice that has some sort of discriminatory effect where it actually. Or predictably results in a disparate impact on a group of persons or creates increases. Reinforces or perpetuates segregated housing patterns. So it is an existing pattern. And it may be an existing pattern that also has a component of segregation. But that alone in and of itself is not uh, not uh, the problem. The problem is if you are continuing to uh, implement. Things that have that continued discriminatory potential effect. That would be potentially in violation of the Fair Housing Act. Um, for example, it specifically is prohibiting you from enacting or implementing land use rules. Ordinances, policies, or other types of procedures that restrict or deny housing opportunities. Or otherwise make unavailable or deny access to housing. Um, so just the existence of single-family homes or that use is not the issue. It's the enacting or implementing of those rules. Or any sort of practice that has discriminatory impact or effect. Um, same thing for larger lot sizes and more desirable. Um, as you noted here in your, in your chat question, uh, more desirable single-family districts further discriminating against lower-income residents. Um. Again, if those, if there are not, um, you know, looking at the city more broadly. And there's measures or imposing restrictions uh, for specific reasons, like the underlying reasons for permitting. Those types of housing or that type of housing in those particular districts as opposed to in other zoning districts across the city. That might be uh, also an issue in terms of not affirmatively furthering fair housing across the city or looking at it citywide. Um, essentially any sort of, you know, uh, moratorium or a lack of allowance for multifamily housing across the city. Um, could be potentially an issue if it has a particular impact on members of a protected class. Um, and so that's why I reviewed for you that variety of protected classes, both at the federal level and the state level. Stopping my share, that was the end of the slideshow. So um, Dennis, do you have a follow-up to that or?
Um, I guess all I have to say is that um, if we could prove that a protected class is being discriminated against by having these large-lot, single-family districts. Then we would have a. have a case, but that's basically what you're saying.
You'd have to, yeah, that would, that's, that's looking at existing zoning we're talking about, and that would be like an underlying pattern. We're talking about sort of looking into the, into the future. If you were looking at a case and you did not want to permit a certain type of housing perhaps in that single-family district, that happens to not be of a single-family use, and the rationale behind that potentially has a discriminatory impact against, on the protected classes that I would just had meant previously reviewed, that could be an issue in terms of not affirmatively furthering fair housing and have an impact, an effect.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I guess Dennis is just adding a little bit more to that. As a municipal official, you know, which is what you are serving on this board, you can't specifically reject proposals for development in response to essentially neighbors' fears that a protected class might occupy that housing. That can't be part of your rationale in the, just both in the, the content of the, of the conversation of the board, or in allowing members of the public to provide that information on the record as part of any public hearing or other type of, you know, decision-making process where you engage the public in a dialogue. You also could not require additional studies or procedural steps or unnecessarily delay decision-making when considering a development or a policy that may be occupied by members of protected classes. So I don't know if there's any particular zoning bylaw or zoning amendment that the city is considering that has been delayed over a period of time, but if it is specifically something that is denying those opportunities and particularly members of protected classes, that could be problematic. Also, this board and, and other land use boards could not impose special requirements through land use regulations or any type of restrictive, you know, deed restriction or covenant, or any conditional or special use permits that effectively limit the ability of people with disabilities to live in a residence of their choice in the community. So that, that's a very, that sounds like it's very narrow, but it's quite, it's quite broad actually, in terms of thinking about people with disabilities. So there's, you know, it's, there's a lot of nuance there in terms of making sure that you are not engaging in any sort of discriminatory practice, but it is taking, putting together the knowledge of protected classes, understanding the patterns of development, and understanding the proposal that you're reviewing and its potential effect.
And I also think that it's understanding the language that's used that is, you know, maybe masking a discriminatory attitude. For instance, we have an ADU ordinance that's been delayed, and there's a lot of language that's being used by the public and/or counselors that could be seen as discriminatory if it's really, you know, analyzed correctly. Anyway, just my comment. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that. That might be, that may be an issue potentially. I will just check to see before we've got about four more minutes. Are there any other questions or comments? Also happy to take any other, I know there are other people just participating. You are welcome to ask a question as well. And if you can't think of one now, you can join us next Monday at the next meeting, the next training, and save it up.
Yeah, I don't see any questions in the Q and A that is available if anybody does have questions. Meanwhile, I always appreciate the ability or having, having time to host these sessions because I always learn something new or remember something that I'd learned before. So Jenny, I very much appreciate your insight and your sharing with us.
Very welcome. Thank you to the members of the public and to the board for allowing me to share this with you tonight and for your interest. I'm glad to follow up and we'll, we'll share with you the, the accompanying guide that goes with this presentation and the other materials, and you're welcome to be in touch if you have any other follow-up questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Very informative. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Very informative as well. Thank you.
Very eye-opening, very eye-opening, and I had to do more research now.
Well, you're welcome, and thank you again, Dennis, everybody. Appreciate the time and thank you, Maren and CPTC. And with that, I think we'll say good night.
Okay, thank you.
Quick question. Sorry, I just want, I just, we have to do, we have to jump on another Zoom for the meeting, and I think Dylan, Dylan, are you on the line? Is he, are the participants able to speak or is it just us on the panel that are allowed to speak? Because I just want to find out from staff whether.
Yeah, here he is. He's jumping, jumping on. There's Dylan. Go ahead.
Hi, John.
Hey. So yeah, we have to complete our meeting. We have to jump on another Zoom. Should be, I, I think Fran said he could do it at eight o'clock, but I mean, since we're already are all here, are we able to jump on that now or should we all just wait till eight o'clock?
We can jump on that now. I'll tell you that I did tell the representative for the applicant on the other item that she, she could expect for it to start at eight. So not a huge rush. There's, the schedule is the only other item on the agenda in the minutes.
Well, I mean, what do we, we'll just be waiting, we'll be waiting for half an hour just to talk about a schedule. So I don't know. Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll start the meeting, but it's entirely up to you. We can wait till eight.
Can you reach out to the applicant or the council for the administrative review and just tell her we're jumping on early and see if she can get on?
Sure.
All right. Sounds great. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks again.
Great. Have a great night, everybody.
Thank you. Good night.
Bye.
I can have that corrected this week and resubmit it.
Okay. Thank, thank you Attorney Flood for that update on, on the project. If you have nothing further, we'll just open up questions to, to, to the board here. So open up questions, comments to the board. This is administrative view, you know, I don't want to, we don't need to go down the line, but if, if anyone has any questions or comments about this administrative view, feel free to, to speak.
Very, Mr. Chairman, I got a counsel. I don't know if you're aware, we did get a, a couple of, we get a notification from DPD along with forwarding off of a couple of photos from a neighbor who says that your client is working outside of normal, work is being done outside of our normal hours of operation. Were you aware of that?
Pertaining to this property or is it the property across the street? Because if it's the property across the street, we met with Dave Fuller on site. I think it was two weeks ago pertaining to that issue.
Okay. Dylan, do you have anything to, do you have anything further on this?
The report was regarding this property.
This property? Okay. So what, what specifically, I, this is the first I'm hearing about it.
Here's, it's a email from Michael Ash. Says they were there at 10:00 last night. This is dated September 21st. They were there at 10:00 last night, 6:00 this morning. They moved in office trailers, added fencing, storing gas power equipment for the bridge, and no permits for anything. That was last Thursday. Sure. I guess you weren't aware of it. I'm not sure if your client was aware of it either, but they did provide some photos. I don't know if they don't have a date or a timestamp on them. Does appear to be sometime either early morning dusk or just, or early morning dawn or getting close to dusk.
I'm happy to address it and discuss it with whoever I need to discuss it with, but I had no knowledge of it until right now.
All right. Just want to bring that to your attention, but Dylan, when we get a chance, can you forward off that email to Attorney Flood? I'm not sure.
Yeah.
And along with the photos that the, that the, I thought are provided. That's, that's all I wanted to bring up. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Any other comments and questions by my colleagues?
If I could, I just want to ask Attorney Flood, why was there such a delay here? We were supposed to have a six-month administrative review. I, I'm not sure of the date, but I'm guessing that it was basically the beginning of the year, like in January. And we're looking at an administrative review happening in the end of September. And, and we're still fixing things. I mean, you, you got, anyway, I'm, I'm just, I'm just wondering, is, is there a reluctance on the behalf of the, of the owner to comply, or just negligence, or confusion, or all three? Just seems rather haphazard.
I was just recently retained pertaining to this property, and my client is very willing to do everything, so I'm not sure what happened. I'm not sure where the ball was dropped, but he definitely takes care of it. But I can't speak for prior to my involvement in this situation.
Well, I just want to say to the Lowell Planning and Development Group, namely you, Dylan, that the other 11 administrative reviews that I outlined that we had conditioned approval for applicants that I think I sent around a year ago. This is important for us to do, obviously, because it kind of lit a fire under the applicants or the owners behind, I guess, to, to, to accomplish what we needed them to accomplish. So these other administrative reviews that are hanging out there, we should get to. I understand that staffing is a problem, but these conditions are important, and these projects warrant administrative reviews if we condition it that way. I, I just want to reinforce that one more time. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Any other questions or comments by my colleagues here? All right, seeing none here. What, what is the wish of the board? Do, do we want to move forward on approving this, this administrative review with, with the condition and premise we set, or? Mr. Ricker, what's, what's your, what's your recommendation here?
It's up to the board. You could, and, and the administrative review or, or do an additional administrative review.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Ricker. It, it does seem like there's still a lot of outstanding things going on. Do, do my colleagues want to, want to add on another review and another, what's the timing, like another six months? Or was that, what, what do folks think here?
Mr. Chairman, sorry, go ahead. I would, I mean, essentially, we don't know. We had a complaint. It looks like those office trailers moved on fencing, storing more equipment. The attorney's not aware of what's going on. She's going to check with the owner. I, I think we have to get to the bottom of this. This has been, you know, a problem before the attorney got on. They were, they were non-responsive. I don't think anything has really been concluded at this point. It looks like we just have more questions.
No, I agree. Thank, thank you, Ms. Harvey. Thank you, sir.
I'd like to suggest that the administrative review be a little more of a fire drill here and say maybe three months. I don't, I'm, I'm getting tired of carrying this, and I think that we should have this resolved sooner rather than later. If the applicant is choosing not to take this seriously, then we should get to the bottom of it sooner rather than later and deal with it rather than push it six months out, in my opinion.
Thank, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Yeah, I, I would be in agreeance to that. I don't know what my colleagues think here.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I would agree with that as well. I, I think it would also give Attorney Flood enough time since she just got on board with the client. She probably needs to backtrack and try to get as much details as we can, you know, within the next three months. So in, 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 in her defense per se, I think with her not being aware of the complaints, now she, you know, needs to do some type of triage and, and hopefully we can get that resolved in the next three months.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Proko. Thank you, sir. Any other comments from my colleagues here? Seeing none. Attorney Flood, so we're going to do another administrative view in, in three months. Mr. Ricker, in terms of like the, the date, so we'll, we'll be able to schedule that out, out in three months, around that time?
Yep, you can schedule it for the first meeting of January, which would be roughly three months.
Okay. And thank you, Mr. Ricker. Attorney Flood, are you, so we're going to move forward with a follow-up, another administrative view in three months. So could you work with DPD and just, there's still a lot of like, you know, things that we need to sort out here, just to make sure everything's being followed, all the conditions, all, all the kind of things that, that were talked about tonight?
Yes, I'm happy to. I believe based on my review of the, the permit, all of the conditions are complied with at this point. I was working based on a list, and I believe that the only issue we were running into tonight was that the plan that we submitted still showed the fence slightly over, but that has been rectified. Now, coming into the meeting tonight, I'm told that there was a complaint. So I guess from my perspective, who do I deal with pertaining to the complaint? Who did the complaint go to? Who do I need to work with to rectify the complaint? The other conditions, I believe, we have satisfied. Am I missing something?
I think you'd probably go to DPD. It looked like the complaint was issued to Mabel Bond, who is the DPD enforcement officer.
Okay.
I think maybe Dylan, should she deal with Mabel or you or Fran or all of you or?
You can give me a call. The report went to May and it was forwarded to, to us.
Okay. So the next review in January will be to make sure that we're still in compliance with everything that was issued in the permit, as well as we have addressed the complaint that was set forth.
I think in addition that you're providing an as-built for the fence.
Yes. We submitted the as-built, but it was, it was not accurate.
Perfect. So I think, yes, so yes to that, Counsel Flood. So, so we'll move forward with another review in January, at, at the next meeting in January.
Do you know the date of that meeting yet?
Mr. Ricker, what is the date, the first meeting?
We just approved it too.
I'm scrambling for it now.
Would be January 8th.
January 8th, perfect. Well, thank you all for working with me tonight. I apologize for my speaker issue. Hopefully that doesn't happen again.
Oh, thank, thank you, Counsel Flood, for being patient. I know, you know, everyone's having, myself, technical difficulty too, so I.
I'd much rather be in person.
Yeah, we should be live next time. I mean, this was just more of a offset thing with the training.
Yeah. All right. Thank, thank you, Counsel Flood. All right, so we'll move forward with a vote to continue this, another ministry review in January 8th. Can we have a motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, let's make a motion for 17 Montreal Street. Dream, Mr. Chairman, let's make a motion for seventeen Montreal Street and two sixty-four, two sixty-six Plain Street to um uh continue the administrative review to January eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Motion by uh uh Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Proko. Um. Can we have a roll call for the um, for the motion, please?
Uh, Chairman, thank.
Uh. Approve um, approve the motion.
Uh, Vice Chair Callahan?
Uh, approve continuance of administrative review to January eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Member McCarthy?
Move continuance to January eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Um, Member Briere?
Approval.
Member Proko?
Approve continuance to January eighth, twenty twenty-four.
And Member Hubby?
Approved.
All right, council, you've been approved, but see you January eighth for this administrative view.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you. You as well, thank you.
Bye.
All right, folks, uh, um, that's pretty much the last thing on our agenda. Is there any, oh, Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, we as a, as a um, as a board should be electing um officers um one more time. I, well, uh, I think it's September that we're obligated to do it in, but maybe we can schedule it for the October twelfth meeting.
I think that's great. Um, Mr. Ricker, can we add that to the agenda? The election of officers, October twelfth here?
Yep, we can add that to the agenda.
Thank, thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. McCarthy, for that reminder, sir.
You're welcome.
Anything else from my colleagues before we have a motion to adjourn?
Uh, I just want to say how proud I am of you guys uh speaking clearly about the integrity of the board at the last meeting. Um, and I really feel strongly about that. Um, as a board member, I think that this group of board members is um by far the strongest group I've served with and I'm really happy that uh so many of you were able to speak clearly about how each of us strive mightily to be um as forthright and um have integrity in our decisions. So thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. I appreciate that. I I am, and I'm sure my colleagues are too. Um, thank you, sir. Um, any other comments from my colleagues before we have a motion to adjourn? All right, seeing none. Can we have a motion to adjourn, please?
Dream, Mr. Mo, uh, Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All right, motion by Mr. McCarthy to adjourn.
Second.
Second by the Vice Chairman, Mr. Callahan. All in favor to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Any poll say nay, the ayes have it. We are adjourned. Thank you, folks. Thank you. Have a good night. We'll see you um, see you next time.
Great.
Thank you.
Have a good night, folks.
Get that baseball cap. It looks great.
All right, folks, we'll see you in the next meeting.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Have a good night, everybody.